Uh, it is June twenty six and we are calling this meeting to order. This is the Squamish-Lilwet Regional District Committee in the Hall. Can I ask someone please to move the agenda of uh twenty June twenty six? Moved by Director de Maire, second by Director Mack. All in favor? Any opposed motion carries? We're going to skip the um committee, the whole closed meeting and come back to it so that we can do our delegations. Um, of which we have two today. Our first delegation of the online. Good morning, Jackie.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm good. How are you today?
I'm well, thank you. Um, so you are our first delegation today. Uh, Jackie Rasmussen is the Executive Director of the Lilwet Regional Invasive Species Society. And you have uh five minutes for your presentation and five minutes for questions. Uh, we will be a little bit flexible on that time if you need a bit more time because we've um had another council. So um, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you very much Chair Ford and thank you very much to the board for all your support over the years as well as um the time for this morning. And I, we wanted to take some time just to be able to give you a snapshot of of what we have accomplished in the last year. As um an example of what we accomplish, you know, we've accomplished in the last few years. And I'd like to give some highlights. Uh, the full report we have on our website, but I will get you to go to the next slide. But I'd like to start with partnerships. Uh, it's, they're very, very important for our organization. And um, I'll start with Hoyston. And I have a um note, this is in memory of David McKay. We lost a very important uh member of our community. And this year, and he is on the far left. This is a picture of my, my crew, also with fire ecologist Colleen Ross, as well as one of my board members. We're working with Hoyston to talk about uh invasive species and incorporating them into cultural burning. They did a cultural burn this year. And we were looking at monitoring and what we can do to incorporate invasives. So we're sad too um for the loss of David, but very um very grateful for this partnership that we have, including um Gerald Michelle, who is in the high vis vest on the far uh right of your screen, who has been um one of our members um and our founding board members since the inception of Elbris. Next slide. So uh this year also with Kliket uh Papetla, we did a inventory of the Town Creek watershed, which is basically the one just above uh the town of Lilwet. And this hasn't been inventoried since it burned, basically. It's gated by the community to keep um, basically to monitor access. And what's nice about our partnership in the last few years, uh Christian Aaron Keel is pictured on the far left with my crew. And he is the Director of the Papetla Council, and he is also our Board Chair. Next slide. We also work with Squailak, and this is a picture of us out in the field working with also the Thompson Nicola Regional District. We have an overlapping area in near the edge hills and on the east uh side of our border. We're doing some monitoring of biocontrol agents and the one of the things that many things we did with Squailak last year was uh they came out and they were learning about biocontrol for some of our invasive plants. Next slide. We did, we continue to work with Dr. Jennifer Grenz's Indigenous Ecology Lab. And I'm really pleased to say, yeah, they're up right now. We have uh four um students, one of them's just finishing their masters and in Virginia pictured in the middle here with the um overalls on. She is the, she just finished her masters as well and is now working on a PhD. What's growing back on the McKay Creek Fire? We also have two more students doing work that's working towards fire recovery and restoration. Next slide. So our field work is uh one of our main components that we do, and this is a picture of my staff with a local rancher as well as Ministry of Forests. Um, Range Agrologist Thomas Bowson, we were in the field last year looking at again some biocontrol areas. Next slide. But just to give you a snapshot of what we actually accomplished last year, we um did water sampling for invasive mussels. Um, we did eight of them. Thankfully, no uh mussels were apparent this year as well as in B C, so that continues to be good news. We also um inventoried and established unfortunately a hundred and thirty-eight new sites when we were doing inventory that covered about forty-one hectares. The others, this included looking at the Casper Fire as well as um Mc- McDonald's Road, which was a mining area um and Town Creek. We treated uh two hundred and uh forty-one sites that covered seventy-one hectares. Uh, the, the little hiking guy there is the, represents the nine different areas that we did some inventory in. And the good news too is that we, of the six hundred and five areas that we surveyed, a hundred and sixty of those sites had no plants. Next slide. So in the last few years, we've uh done invasive sampling for mussels, or sorry, invasive muscle sampling on Seton Lake and at the mouth of the Bridge River. Um, we have partnered with the Kliket uh Papetla Guardians as well as the Hoyston Guardians, and these are pictures of uh what we did with them in the last few years. So we're, we're continue to work with all of the Shaliam um northern or upper Shaliam Nation and they uh, the communities are our primary um focus for building capacity and basically passing the torch to do this work on their own. Next slide. This is just an example, or at least an overview map of the uh sites that we did do this year. So you can see, they do follow along a lot of the major transportation lines, but we did cover quite um a large area. And, and these are representative polygons that were surveyed um and or treated. Next slide. Oh, this uh next little bit is the, one of our other major programs, which is outreach. And this is a picture of my staff. They're going around to different campgrounds and we were collaborating with the Lilwet Visitor Center. And so on the far right, Sasha is one of the workers that came and out on a ride along with us from the visitor center. And um, so we will continue to work with the visitor center and do that, giving uh opportunity for summer staff to work together. Next slide. Uh, this is just one of the many examples that of the um events that we attended, walking with the Smolts. We really are um very appreciative and um thankful to the Shakawash community that puts this together. We had over six hundred kids attend this event. Next slide. So just a few um statistics from our outreach program. So we uh continue to have a digital media coordinator. We're very thankful for Fiona McDonald and all the work that she does to coordinate this. It's a huge job, but she's also making it more efficient. Three hundred and forty-six social media posts reaching actually nine hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two on six channels. TikTok had the highest reach than Facebook and Instagram. Um, what's interesting about and why we jumped so high this year was on TikTok, we had one post that almost went viral. It had about seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand views. And that was actually of the invasive water sampling. Um, and so it showed our partners throwing the, the nets into the, the water. The other number there is um the newsletters and our print features, handouts and tourism ads reached ninety-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two. And then we also did presentations, events and training sessions that reached about, you know, just over seventeen hundred people. All right, and next slide. I want to really highlight the fact that we really collaborate a lot with our partners, and this is a example from the um our collaboration with the Sea to Sky Invasive Species Council, that this is an advertisement that we put in jointly to the Backroad Mountain um Backroad Map Books. Uh, so this is um one of those trail books and it's, it's a really great resource for people going in the backcountry and we were highlighting um to ATV and and other motorized vehicles that you really need to make sure that you have a clean vehicle when you're moving from different regions. Next slide. And that's all for me. Like, if you have any questions, but thank you so much today.
Excellent, thank you so much. Um, does anyone have any questions?
I'm happy to make a comment, just um, I think, thank you Jackie and um, you know, I'm like so proud of what the work that uh the Invasive Species Society is doing, but it's sort of like public health, you give some vaccinations and an epidemic doesn't happen. This is, you're preventing a lot of outbreaks and so it's sometimes hard to have really good PR on, on something that doesn't happen. Believe me, I appreciate that you removed the single weed, you know, in that place and there wasn't an outbreak that this is, this is, and the outreach that you're doing in the school. Um, I hear it to my little nieces and nephew and a way to go. Um, it's just such good work. Thank you. And your partnerships with the First Nations are so strong. It's, it's commendable. I'm glad you're here today.
Thank you, Vivian.
Hi, Director de Maire.
Yeah, Jackie uh uh did a presentation for the Bell Lake area. And uh, out of that came that hopefully we can get one property owner that was decimated to do a project on it, to belong to it, to see if any invasives come along to that property. It's all dirt. And uh, that's where the invasive's like to go. So, but it'd be great to see that move forward.
Yeah, we're making plans and we already have interest, so I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm really excited about that opportunity and for my students as well, because it's a another opportunity for them to set up a different type of monitoring and using some of the work they're out with UBC this week. And they're learning how to do some specific vegetation monitoring, and this procedure and methodology could be used on that site as well.
Great.
Yeah.
Jackie, thanks for that presentation. It's very impressive. Um, and just, just a question, sort of a general question. There was some news recently of the community on Vancouver Island, this and the sale of invasive species in within their community. I just wondered where, if you know if the post bans exist in your area or is that something we, we should work towards?
Well, that's very timely that you asked. Thank you for that question. We just had a delegation with the District of Lilwet and I was talking to them about the the opportunity to take the initiative to ban the sale of invasive plants within the District of Lilwet. And that we already are um on our way because one of the major retailers in our re- in our area that actually sells invasive, or sorry, sells plants, has committed um to not selling invasives for I, I can't give you the exact number of years. I haven't looked this up, but um it's got to be three or five by now. So Timber Mart has been onside. Um, and continues to use like the long list of two hundred species when they do purchases. And so I'm working with um CAO Joe McCullough, and we're going to be preparing um some uh basically some materials and some things for the district um council to, to actually contemplate that. And so we're looking at avenues to do this through bylaw.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and the final question. Uh, my question for you, and thank you for being here, Ms. Rasmussen, is I'm just curious, if you think about the year ahead, I fully appreciate Director Birch Jones' analogy to public health. Um, what do you see as the biggest challenge in your forthcoming uh work plan for the year?
Um, we feel that the, the, you know, being able to get to those places that have either been impacted by fire or other areas that need inventory. So that, that is one of our challenges, oh, just even in this, the imminent future right now. Um, but the other thing that I'm really um working a lot with our indigenous partners is the, the big hydro upgrade projects. There's going to be hundreds of people coming into the region and we are have been participating for two years now on the access and accommodation um things uh like the meetings and giving input. But I'm really not seeing a commitment from B C Hydro to actually address it. And they're coming into the region and I've been told they're doing vegetation surveys. And I've asked to have a meeting with those people that will be on the ground to understand our priority plants because apparently they know about it. But that's, that's a challenge for us is having, you know, this large organization and this big upgrades and having so many people. So I'm, I'm really um you know, we're really reaching out to our partners and also to, to B C Hydro to like to make some commitments as far as environmental conservation and invasive species management. Um, so that's one of our biggest things in, over the next year too.
That's really helpful and I appreciate all the amazing work that you're doing. It's really helpful for us at this table to know where those pain points are and where we can show up in partnership with you to advocate to the folks uh that are um that need a little bit of handholding to come to the table with us. Uh, and I do also just want to reiterate all the work that you've been doing, especially on um the public education side of things. I was uh so heartwarming to uh was listening to the CBC the other day and they're playing the Healing the Land After Wildfires segment on Ideas and it
Oh, yeah.
And we had a wildfire within the boundaries of the District of Squamish and even just through listening to it again, I was picking up on, on lots of really good lessons learned and thank you so much for sharing uh the expertise that you have developed within your team and, and uh the region. So thank you very much for that.
Hmm, thank you. I'm glad you're able to listen to that. And I've been reaching out to the Sea to Sky to sharing our experiences, just even keeping staff, staff safe and um you'll see the note, latest newsletter for SISK is really like, you know, highlighted some of the things that, you know, when we have fire in our region, it impacts our workers, it impacts everybody. And it's um, it's a difficult thing. So I've been, you know, just checking in on my colleagues and making sure they're okay too.
Thank you so much. Um, Jackie, having you here and we look forward to seeing you again soon. Um, and speaking of SISK, they are next, so we will move along to our next delegation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Sea to Sky Invasive Species Council. Great to see you both here. Um, the, you now have, uh, sorry, we're a little bit late getting to you, but um we will turn the floor over to you. You've got five minutes for your presentation and about five minutes for questions. Um, we have Claudan Gudbo-Gautier, Communications and Outreach Manager, and Erin Galloway, Field Program Manager. Over to you.
All right, good morning. Thank you very much. Uh, do we have the present, do we have the side deck? Okay, it's pulling up right now. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Thanks for having us. Um, yeah, my name is Claudan Gudbo-Gautier. I'm with the Sea to Sky Invasive Species Council as the Communications and Outreach Manager. And my colleague Erin uh Galloway is the Field Program Manager um who will be uh joining me in this presentation. So thank you again for your support uh in uh twenty twenty-four. Um, we're here to give you an update on what we've been up to for the past twelve months or so and share some highlights. So next slide, please. So our mandate is to minimize the spread of invasive species and their impact on the environment, the economy and human health in the Sea to Sky Corridor. And so our work is split uh between the field program, which Erin manages, uh where seasonal hires that are often students work outside doing inventory control and monitoring of target invasive species. And uh the education and outreach side of things, uh which focuses more on prevention through training, volunteer activities and digital outreach. Next slide, please.
So, um, morning, everyone. My name's Erin. Um, I'm just giving you a brief highlight of what the field crew accomplished in the twenty twenty-four field season. And so we observed the eight different invasive plant species at five hundred and ninety-two different project areas. Um, and we are making progress as three hundred and thirty existing species sites uh showed no regrowth. But out of the sites that did show regrowth, we completed uh some mechanical removals. So we carried out four hundred and twenty mechanical treatments at two hundred and one project areas. Um, and our crews removed just under four thousand meters squared of invasive plants um of thirty-seven different invasive plant species. Uh, and that weighed in about uh twenty-nine hundred kilograms of invasive plants were removed from the land. Um, and some highlights of that, uh where our crews moved six hundred and forty meters squared of thousand meters squared of Scotch broom. We were able to do a bit more Scotch broom last year thanks to a bit of extra funding from the SLRD. Next slide, please. And another important tool in our toolbox is chemical treatments. So some herbicide work. Uh, so we carried out a hundred and ninety-six chemical treatments at seventy-four project areas focusing mainly on Japanese knotweed, uh but we also do chemical treatments of other species like wild parsnip and flatpea. Um, and we treated about eleven thousand meters squared of land um and about seventeen different invasive plant species. Uh, and we utilized three different selective methods. So a spot foliar spray. Uh, we use stem injection for Japanese knotweed, um as well as a cut step method. We mostly utilize this with woody species um like Scotch broom and uh English holly. And next slide, please. Um, we also have had the opportunity to go up to Lilwet for the past few years. So since twenty twenty-one, um our field crews have been assisting in the management of wild parsnip in the, please look at uh First Nations wetland. And we've worked directly with the Pika-Pegola Council and Elris to map and remove um plants both mechanically and chemically. Uh, a wild parsnip is um the species that we're managing and trying to get a control of uh because the species is uh phototoxic. So the sap uh when it gets on your skin, it can react with sunlight and cause severe burns. So it's very high priority to manage and we're thankful to be able to work with the Pika-Pegola Council and Elris to do that. And next slide, please.
Now, in Education and Outreach, last year we trained uh two hundred and six municipal and uh staff and contractors through the region on invasive species identification, removal and reporting. Uh, we also ran a training course, the invasive species, uh sorry, the invasive resubordination uh which happens both, both online and in person, and we had eighty-two participants. Next slide, please. Uh, we also organized and facilitated fifteen weed pull activities that involved over two hundred people of truly all ages. Um in total, we estimate that uh our volunteers removed over eight hundred kilos of invasive plant material, which is really nothing to shake a stick at. Um, next slide, please. Now, perhaps the, the uh area we're remote, we have the most significant impact is um in the spirit of collaboration that we foster with other organizations um through B C truly. Um, so last year we identified a common gap in outreach resources amongst uh B C regional invasive species organizations uh that had to do with uh RV and camper users. So we collaborated with Elris as well as other groups in B C to develop a brochure um to address this gap. Next slide, please.
Great, and we want to say a huge thank you um to our past staff for the last twelve months, our field crew and then our Education and Outreach team um that made all this work possible, as well as our, our various partners and funders and the, the SLRD um for allowing some of this work to happen. Thank you for another successful year of twenty twenty-four.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your presentation. Does anyone have any questions? You're in a bit of a, um, you have very informed room because we just had the presentation for Lilwet. So uh, most of the questions have probably been asked, but I will uh be Director Birch Jones and then Director Rainbow. Go ahead.
Thank you, Lynn. I really appreciate all the work you guys are doing. I mean, this is a wonderful report. I wondered how you're doing. Um, I'm desperately trying to keep Scotch broom out of Area B, of course. Do you think, are you sort of checking the spread of it or is it, is it, do you feel like you're making progress or just slowing the spread or how, how's that going overall? I know that's a really tough one.
Yeah, for sure. Scotch broom um spreads prolifically. We've um sort of made our own containment line. Um, that's just north of Squamish, so we've really tried hard to, every time we spot Scotch broom or a community member comes to us and spots Scotch broom, we try to get our crews out and remove it. Um, ASAP, I think uh we're doing well. A lot of the sites that haven't showed regrowth were Scotch broom sites. Um but it is, it's a constant battle. I think uh we're making progress. Um, but it, it's still an uphill battle, I would say.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I'd like to follow on on the Scotch broom before I get to my question. Uh, I live in Furry Creek and we have a breeding ground for, for Scotch broom. We've got tons of it there. Um, so maybe I can connect with you offline and, and um talk about how we might do something about that. Uh, the reason is uh not exactly urgent, but there, there is going to be some development there and they'll be clearing that land. So the question would be, do we deal with the Scotch broom before it's cleared or just let them clear it? So, so I'll get back to you on that. My, the other question I, um we, we saw in the news recently about the community on the island that has banned the sale of uh of invasive species within its community. And I just wonder what, what is the situation from Westland through Pemberton? How, how, how do we stand on that? Do, do you know or is there anything that you're doing to, to, to pass that?
Absolutely. Uh, yeah, so uh there's various uh municipal bylaws that are in place in um the, in various communities through the corridor that ban the sale of invasives. So the District of Squamish uh has a bylaw that's in place of that, and we're working uh with the district on uh more of a prevention and education approach um to uh to implement the bylaw. Um, and I am happy to report that the uh President of Municipalities of Whistler actually uh amended their environmental protection bylaw very recently to include the ban, the uh, the, a ban on the sale of invasives as well. Um, and so uh we are meeting with them next week to discuss uh next steps with that. So essentially, our role is mostly in uh support of uh, you know, we're not the plant police, as I like to say. Uh, our role is uh very much in uh supporting the municipalities in their initiatives. Um, but we're very thankful that uh they have been uh very proactive in uh their project.
Um, I have a question. Um, I recently discovered that periwinkle is uh rather invasive. Can you tell me why it's a problem? Because it's everywhere in Emerald.
Sorry, I missed that question. My internet just cut out, if you don't mind.
Just asking about periwinkle and why periwinkle is problematic.
Totally, yeah. Um, periwinkle, it spreads prolifically. It, it's really good at spreading in shaded areas, so it can really cover um the forest canopy uh and it, it just shades out other uh species. And when it is accidentally released from gardens or dumped somewhere, it can um spread quite quickly and then plant fragments of it can accidentally get spread around by mowing or other people moving uh soil material. Um, it is a species that is listed in our strategic control category, so it's not uh one species that's high on our list to prioritize, but we'll, we'll look at uh managing it in, in high value uh ecosystems uh like the Emerald Forest or um in like the Squamish Observatory, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone else have questions? I don't see any. Um, I think, well, thank you both for being here today and um this was really, really helpful. I think we'll continue to see you and uh look forward to hearing from you again. Uh, please let us know if there's anything that uh we can do to help with um advocacy. I'm certainly uh what I've heard from both presentations is that uh we could um help advocate on your behalf. Um, perhaps we write a letter to B C Hydro um to ask them to engage with um both councils on um a, a, a more fulsome engagement. Do we want to do that as a board?
Yes. Particularly in the north, just given the, the scope of the big project that's coming up. That'd be great.
Okay, so um I think while you're all still here, um I will ask for Director Birch Jones to make a motion uh that the Board of the SLRD write a letter to B C Hydro encouraging uh more fulsome engagement with uh Encouraging more fulsome engagement with both of our invasive species councils. On major projects within our region to ensure that these species are not a part of their
Minimize the spread.
Minimize the spread of these species.
Yes, so moved.
Moved by Director Birch Jones, seconded by Director Rainbow. Any other comments? Go ahead.
Just a question, pardon my ignorance, but would we include C N in this? And or any sort of caveat around management tactic preferences? Like, are they using? Can't remember what the, like, oh, phosphate or whatever it is. Or we just sort of, at least just ask them to engage as concerning.
I think let's focus on B C Hydro for this, but let's come back in July. Because the C N one is I, I would like a little bit more information from staff on that before. So let's take that offline and we'll come back and for a C N letter. But on the motion as it stands for B C Hydro. Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed motion carries? And this is, of course, a recommendation to the board. And then this will come to our board meeting to decide. That we send the letter because we don't make decisions in committee of the whole. But there we are. Thank you, all three of you for being here and staying on with us. And we will bid you adieu for now and we will see you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Would we want to consider as a reading history, saying something to other municipalities to support this idea of bylaws to, to enforce the ban?
Yeah. Well, there will be more information because we have heard that resolution several times. And we've even put that resolution forward.
U B C M.
To U B C M and to the area associations. And these I don't want to, I don't want to I need more information, but I don't think that has been supported from a, it's like plastic bags. You can't.
Just looking at it from the sea to sky, looking beyond that, within our regional district.
Can we deal with that when we have the information?
Yeah.
Because there's pieces to that that they need data. It's like plastic bags in my mind. We weren't allowed to ban plastic bags, but if we encouraged retailers not to offer plastic bags. That was, and so if we encourage vanscapers and gardens or garden centers to not sell them, it's far better outcome.
Yeah.
Right?
I'd be interested in hearing what, I think it was Conox, wasn't it? The, the, the community on the island. It was, it was on I think it made the national years.
What? On this, we just heard from both invasion councils that I think it's working with Lilouette, the District of Squamish already has a bylaw on.
We have heard a bylaw.
In our M O W, you just.
We just heard a bylaw. So it was an environmental bylaw within the bylaw is banned.
In Pemberton, okay. So I'm, I'm just curious what in addition.
Okay. Then maybe, maybe what we're, what I'm talking about then is, is sort of making something of what we are doing. Because when, when, I mean, this is a provincial wide problem, this invasive species. And we're supporting these groups that are working hard to do something about it. We're financially supporting them. That made such a splash when that one community on the island, they made real fuss about that. You know, and I, I think that was very good. And, and if we are doing these things throughout the sea to sky. Then, then let's, let's publicize what we're doing. Let's, let's pull it together and, and not leave it to the communities, but make it as a regional district. Sort of response. And we've had no luck moving it through U B C M, getting any sort of provincial action. So let's do what we can do locally and say, hey, this is what we are doing. And it, and it's positive. And we encourage other, other communities to, to do the same. So there we go.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is you, Verbalupate.
Hi, everyone. I have a policy. I'm going to be nothing to report this morning.
Five point two, a request for decision regarding the area C zoning bylaw amendment. District law two two four seven, Congress of Development Zone. And this is the direction on the community amenity, amenity contribution. And we have Director of Planning Kim Needham. And we have Senior Planner.
Yeah, just planner.
Kate. Planner, Alex McKay. Thank you both for being here. For sure.
Very much so. This is a direction request that's before you today. This bylaw was given first reading back twelve months ago, I guess, to the board. So the purposes of the report before you today are to share the public comments that we've received during the notice of no public hearing period. To update the board on the referral comments that were received following the April first reading. To update the board on further information that the board requested during discussion at that meeting. To provide some additional information on the proposed land donation areas of the remainder lands of District Lot two two four seven. And then we are seeking clear direction from the board today on two components of the proposed community amended amenity contribution. The first being whether the board would prefer to see a non-market housing component continue to be part of the proposal, or would prefer to see a cash and leave donation. And the second being whether the board wants to prioritize the development of regional transit infrastructure or trail infrastructure. As there are only really sufficient funds for one or one of those two items. So once we're given direction today, staff intend to take that back. We can amend the bylaw as needed, if needed, and then we will bring both the bylaw and a report. With consideration of second reading to a future board meeting. So I will quickly go through the new information since it was last before the board. So the first being the public input. During the notice of no public hearing period, we've received thirteen written submissions. All of those submissions were in strong support of the proposal, with many in support of the non-market, or with all in support of the non-market housing component. And with many coming from existing residents of the Wedgwood Estates Development. In terms of referral responses, so the village of Pemberton responded that they had no comments on the proposal. Heard from the R M O W, both on some planning components, as well as fire services component. And we did look into that in, in great detail with the R M O W and confirmed that there will be sprinklers in the proposed duplexes. A fire department connection is not required. But I do want to add that since the time of this report, I've spoken to the proponent and there is an intention to put, or there's the possibility to put a dry pipe under Highway ninety nine. From the existing hydrant on the east side. A standpipe on the west side so that it would be possible to bring water underneath the highway in the case of a fire emergency so that that hose wouldn't need to be laid across the highway to provide that fire service or fire protection. Squamish Nation came back and stated they have no comment on the proposed amendment at this time. Lilouette Nation has reviewed the proposal with their Land Use and Burrows Committee. We have yet to receive their written response. So that will be presented to the board at the next meeting. Vancouver Coastal Health stated that they have no objection to the zoning amendment in principle, provided the, the design of the water and sewer systems meet the requirements under the Drinking Water Protection Act and Sewerage System Regulation. So staff have requested that the proponent provide proof of adequate drinking water supply and detailed planning for the wastewater disposal at the time of second reading. So again, the, that will be brought forward in more detail at the next meeting. Walrus stated that they have no comments as the proposal's on private land. We've received a preliminary approval from the Ministry of Transportation and Transit. And then staff also engaged with B C Transit. They provided comments on the transit readiness of development. They've indicated that they're supportive of adding a stop at Riverside Drive way, or sorry, Riverside Drive and Highway ninety nine. Although that would need to be internal to the subdivision, as I'll speak to in more detail later. They did also share that, so the village of Pemberton is the primary funding partner currently for regional transit that runs between Whistler and Pemberton. And they also shared that if there were to be a request for a change of service, provided the infrastructure is in place, they need about six months to implement that change. So I will now go through the board requests for information from the previous meeting. The first being requesting that staff bring back additional details on the potential transit service. Based on discussions with the Ministry of Transportation and Transit and B C Transit. So the Ministry of Transportation, Transportation and Transit indicated that they are not supportive of adding bus stops along Highway ninety nine. And they would prefer to see, or they would support a bus stop internal to the subdivision on either side of the highway. What staff have been exploring with the proponent and with B C Transit is servicing both the north and southbound bus traffic. Out of an area internal to the existing subdivision on the east side of the highway. So a turnaround there that would provide service in both directions. And as we work through this, there will be more investigatory work and work done with B C Transit on the design of that turnaround and things like sightlines along the highway as well. I think it was Director Pattingill asked about the home office and home business use in the bylaw. So we did confirm that in the staff report that was missed, but it was in the bylaw itself. So that is provided for. There was a request for more information on contributions to the Wedgwood Estates Fire Protections, the fire service. And so staff, we worked with our finance department. And determined that based on the current rates, the twenty twenty five rates, which will likely change, it would be about three hundred and eighty six dollars per annum per unit that would be contributed to that service. There was a request for more information on the proposed stratas and how the units will be titled. So we spoke to the developer about that. It is still preferred to have separate stratas, although it is possible that those could all be consolidated in the future. It is still recommended to keep the non-market and the market strata separate because there are slightly different, the units are slightly different sizes. And it just ensures equity in terms of what's being paid into the strata corporation needs. There was also a request for more detail on posed non-market unit pricing. So you will see further into the report, there's an estimated valuation that's been provided. The proponent has committed to pricing the non-market units at approximately thirty two percent below market value at the time of initial sale. And then resale pricing would be tied to inflation only to keep the units affordable or below market rather in perpetuity. There was also a request for further information on who would qualify for the non-market housing, whether retirees are an appropriate group that could qualify for that housing. And we just want to reiterate that currently it's the intention of staff to structure the requirements, the qualification requirements in a similar manner to what's done under the Whistler Housing Authority. Which does have provisions for retirees, but you have to meet a very specific set of requirements and a long tenure having worked in the region. In terms of the management of non-market housing, so we've gone back and had some discussions at the executive director of the Whistler Housing Authority. And they continue to support the possibility of managing this on behalf of the S L R D. There would be something likely a monthly fee that is paid to the W H A by the S L R D to carry that out for us. Costing on that, we can have an order of magnitude call statement for our second reading, but at this time, we'd have to prepare, we haven't yet prepared the scope of work for them, which they need to look at to provide us with that estimate. But their board does support that possibility. In terms of servicing, Vancouver Coastal Health has indicated support for the proposed servicing approach based on their referral response. And there were also questions about how this would benefit the existing residents of the area at the previous meeting. The proposal as presented at the time of first reading would benefit existing residents through the provision of funds to support trail infrastructure in the region. As well as other recreational assets in the area, or should those funds be directed toward regional transit that would also service residents of the existing Wedgwood Estates Development? So on page eleven of the report, you will see, I touched on this, but there's a valuation of the proposed amenity contribution as requested by the board at the previous meeting. Which includes cash contributions, the non-market covenanted housing. And the subsidization of those proposed units and the land contribution as well. For a total, estimated total, I should say, of about two point one million dollars. And so just quickly to touch on the proposed land donation and provide a little bit more information around that. So that's approximately a hundred and twenty two hectares of land that would remain on District Lot two two four seven. Which is proposed to be donated to the S L R D. We did go back to the proponent after the April board meeting and requested a slope analysis to just really understand what the development potential of those remainder lands would be. You'll see that in your report today. So there is very limited lands and that zero to twenty percent thing, which would be considered appropriate for development. The majorities of those are located in the hydro right of way. On District Lot five, six, two, one. So not part of two, two, four, seven. Recreational development in the form of additional trails and staging would be an appropriate fit for the remainder lands, but it isn't suited for anything, any form of intensive development or residential development. Okay. So the only other thing I wanted to mention before getting into the request for direction and discussion is just that there have been no changes made to the bylaw since the time of first reading. It's still as it stood back in April. So I think with that, I'll, I'll open it up and we look forward to receiving direction from the board. Thank you.
No, no, any questions?
Yeah, a few. Just for clarity, and, and I appreciate the references to Riverside Drive and stops, but just want to understand, does that mean what B C Transit has said they're okay with is a continuation of a stop on the east side of the highway? And then we'd have to figure out in the future how to get people across this one, or is B C Transit explicitly said they're okay with stops on both the east and west? And then we would figure out turnaround or?
Thank you. Through, through the chair, the determination of where the stops will be located comes primarily from the Ministry of Transportation and Transit. And all they have said at this point, although we will have further discussions with them, is that they don't want it on the highway itself. What we've explored with B C Transit and the proponent is the opportunity, there's an existing right of way on the east side off of is it Fear's Rest? So there's an existing right of way that has the potential to be developed into basically around about a bus turnaround that could service both north and southbound traffic. Staff are intending to have further discussions with Ministry of Transportation and Transit prior to second reading about how, whether they would like to see a signalized crossing, or if there could just be a speed reduction in that area to allow people to safely move from the west side over to the east side to get onto the bus.
Okay. And then you mentioned a, a possible pipe under the highway. Is that something the developers sort of confirmed that from a theoretical engineering perspective, it's possible? Or is this something like M O T T is generally fine, this sort of thing? And, and so there's no, like, where are we on sort of understanding this is okay?
Thank you through the chair. So I think at this stage, it is a preliminary investigation that's been done, that it's feasible from an engineering standpoint. This is something that has worked in other locations. To reduce the impact or minimize the impact to the highway if there is a wildfire or a fire. Further detail, we can, we can absolutely bring at the time of second reading. So that wasn't part of what was sent out through the referrals process to the Ministry of Transportation and Transit. So we haven't received comments on that specific aspect as a yet.
Okay. My last question for now, the report said no hazards on site, but geotechnical constraints. Does that mean we've sort of considered sort of neighboring properties that are maybe at a higher elevation? And so we might actually have to put mitigation on this property if we were to own it to deal with stuff that's on an adjacent property? Or is that something that would have to be done in the future?
The adjacent lands are crown land that are on that side. I will say the LiDAR data that the proponent has provided and that we have currently for the site doesn't extend all the way up to the top of District Lot two, two, four, seven. There is some additional geotechnical reporting that we are in receipt of and that will be presented at the time of second reading. And staff can certainly investigate that aspect of it, but I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay. And just for clarity then, if things are maybe coming back at second, you know, I think we've seen cases where stuff is on upland provincial land and somehow we get stuck with dealing with it. And so that's why I want to understand what's in the adjacent property, even if it's ground.
Thank you.
Director Richman, go ahead.
Thanks. Couple of questions. First one is around the, the transit turnaround or hub or station or whatever we want to call it. At what point in the development is something like that sort of necessary infrastructure and when is it considered? At what point in the development is something like that sort of necessary infrastructure and when is it considered an amenity contribution? To me, that's sort of a necessary component to building community out on the highway. Um so it's, I'm wondering, like, I don't considering this amenity package, and my first few questions are around the amenities. Um yeah, how 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 do we make that, how do we draw that line?
Um so thank you through the chair, I'll provide an initial answer and then I'm sure Director Needams will have. Something to add as well, so there is, at the time of initial subdivision for the existing development, which is obviously a separate development, which with the states. There was a highway, or sorry, there was a transit layby that was provided for. In this case, we're contemplating what's before the board is a relatively small additional development on the other side of the highway of only twelve units, so. I think I'll let you.
Yeah, um similar to what Ms. Mackay said, there was transit infrastructure put in at the time of the initial subdivision. Because it was anticipated that Riverside Drive was gonna go all the way through to the Wedgewood's parking lot. And um because of the um configuration of the highway. It's been determined that that's not likely to happen because it's too um dangerous a turn. To get back onto the highways, the point where that there's the rock base on the corner that you have to go around, so that's likely not ever going to happen. And so the transit infrastructure that was initially contemplated will not be utilized. So it it has been considered in this development, it's just likely never going to actually happen unfortunately, so this would. Um this proposal now would both accommodate the existing Wedgewood's neighborhood and this neighborhood. The new neighborhood.
But we're considering that an amenity rather than. Or what was was already sort of committed anyway, I'm glad that it's if it goes through that it would fulfill both needs. But I'm just questioning that, you know, as we look at this amenity package, is it truly an amenity or is it something that was supposed to be provided in the first place is. Sort of questionable. Um the second is is similar, the the value of the land above that that will be donated, remind me what how it's owned right now?
It's C D one, so the same zone that applies to what the existing subdivision of Whistler.
The entirety of that property, C D one?
It is.
Um and from the analysis, it sounds like there's there's um. Not very much development potential on it, is that what I understood, I'm sorry, I walked in late and I caught you halfway through.
Okay, um through the chair, yes, that is the case, there's very little land that's zero to twenty percent, which should be considered easy to develop for residential use or more intensive use. And most of that is not on District Lot two two four seven, it's in the hydro right of way, which is a separate district lot, because this is a hooked parcel. So it's really undulating land with a lot of um steeper areas and very few pockets of.
Uh so there's not much use to to the developer for that property, yes. This and 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 the value to us as the S L R D is potentially some trails, is that what I heard? Um so, okay, again, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the seminity package and there's a big number that's been attached to that property and I personally don't see. A ton of use for it, or I'm not too sure what we want to do with it as as a board or as a as a district. Um and I feel like I missed this one too, so I apologize again, the crosswalk discussion, like where 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 are we at with that? I have concerns around the safety, if we have a transit stop on one side now. Trying to understand how people are going to get across the highway, already the turnout, I was on it last night and people come out pretty quick, so I'm worried about that most of the time.
Yeah, um so thank you through the chair, staff have raised that with the Ministry of Transportation, it turns out we haven't heard back as of yet, but we intend to have further discussions around. Around whether there could be a speed reduction, if they want to see a transit stop on each side, how how that's going to be managed effectively. Uh or whether a crossing would be necessary in that location, which does come with a fairly substantial price tag.
So that would come, sorry, before second reading?
We'll have more information prior to second reading, yes.
Wow, okay, thanks, I have a couple of questions for the board, but maybe that's it for staff for now, thank you.
Um Director Strong, go ahead.
Thank you, uh through the chair, but like I asked at the time, uh. This topic comes to the board, but can you remind me where we're at more broadly, so the site is zone C D one? And how much, then your previous staff report, there was a line that this would kind of be the end of development in this area? Um does that account for both sides of the highway, um how much development potential exists still on the east side of the highway? Just curious where we're at with this as a whole.
Thank you through the chair, so the the verbal, the conversations I've had with the proponent is that this would be the end of development, so there would be the duplex units if they were to move forward. Donation of the remainder lands and no further development on the east side within the existing subdivision, so that was a hundred and eight units. It would remain a hundred and eight.
And so that is the kind of cap that exists of the whole unit.
That's correct, yes.
Is there space on the west side, sorry, the east side of the highway to put in the remaining twelve unit?
So, thank you through the chair, there have been previous proposals, the previous proposal that was before this board was for strata lots twelve. At which point in time there were ten um non-market units, if I remember correctly contemplated. I think that that didn't move forward for a number of different reasons, but there are also, it's extremely complicated to amend. The existing strata corporation and it would change the number of units on that side, so that that has not moved forward, that was the previous proposal. It has been explored.
Um and then just appreciate the additional detail that was brought forward in this report and thank you for finding more answers for us. Um with respect to the non-market unit pricing, it says the proponent has committed to pricing the non-market units at thirty two percent below market value. And there is some calculation in there, um. Again, there's some tension here on, uh I think the overall amenity package and how we calculate that, um. Is that, just for clarity, I guess, is it thirty two percent below like sale price, not build price to the developer?
Um so thank you through the chair, on page eleven of your reports, under the evaluations of proposed amenity contribution. The opponent has put together a valuation of to the market valuation at about one point four million dollars, so. They are proposing subsidizing that market valuation to bring the proposed purchase price under a million dollars at the starting. Point at the time of initial sale.
Thank you for that, uh. And I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Director Matt, you have questions?
Uh just uh clarifications on that. Pipe is going under the highway, um that's gonna be there to provide water. To the west side from the east side. So it would be a dry system, like a dry hydrant system. So you're gonna charge it from the west, the east side. When necessary to provide water for firefighting today, so that's all that's for. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, go ahead. Um the two point one mil, that is the community many contribution that's including the units. The non-market units, so if we took off the non-market units and had them all as market. That many many contribution would go up. Correct.
It's, thank you through the chair, I think it's not that it would go up, but the. The funds could be reallocated in a different way, that's really the the question that's before the board today is whether. The board direction is for the non-market housing or a cash and loo approach to that contribution.
And that's four units?
It's four units, correct.
Okay, four units valued at. Nine hundred thousand or one point five?
The cash and loo is one point five.
The cash and loo is one point five for the four units.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, um on that site, have we, I'm just trying to find in the report if we've done a survey of um sensitive. Ecosystems in that area, riparian areas, riparian.
Uh so thank you through the chair, there are, there has been a Q B P report completed for the site, it was in the previous board package at the time of first reading. There are no areas of riparian concern, it's very dry in that area.
Okay, um and you, I'm assuming like, cause we drove dread past it and you'd have to do a lot of blasting in that area. Cause it is quite rocky. Uh, see a head shake back there.
Sorry.
So yeah, thank you through the chair, not in that area, no, that's in that zero to twenty percent, it's forested, but there is not a lot of. There aren't a lot of rock outcrops in the area that's proposed for the duplex development, further, yes, that is the case.
Um and then to put the pipe in, you we would have to, I I'm just trying to figure that out logistically, how that would work. The road would have to be dug up, correct?
Directional drilling.
Or does it do directional drilling, okay, that's was, I was just kind of trying to figure that out. Um and then again, I'm new here, so the strata lot twelve, when we talk, when it was previously shot down to put these there. Why?
Uh so thank you through the chair, fortunately, I don't have my previous report in front of me, but it was detailed in there, but. Um it's, there were a number of considerations, but one is if you want to to change the unit entitlement within the strategy, I think you have to have. I believe it's a hundred percent vote of existing owners.
Okay.
So which would make it very difficult to move that forward.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, yeah, fine.
Um so reflecting on that with some of the feedback that we received uh after going out to. Uh notification, um both seem to be okay with. Uh multi-unit form, sorry, multifamily housing development with some affordable housing, as long as it's on the other side of the highways that. Correct, so they don't want it within their strata, but they are okay with it being on the other side of the road.
Um so thank you through the chair, what I would say, I mean, I think thirteen, not all of whom are owners within Wedgewood Estates, it's, there's a. A lot of other people that own in Wedgewood Estates, which means thirteen and the one oh eight, so.
Okay.
So I guess I have a question for the board and I.
Yeah.
I I apologize, I missed the meeting last in April when this came forward, my alternate was here, um. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I don't know what the conversation sounded like last time, but I just want to voice a couple thoughts I have about this. Um you know, I I look in the in the in the report and it suggests that this aligns with our climate goals, I I wonder how building more units out in the middle of the highway. Really aligns with our climate goals, we're either commuting or we're adding to transit. Transit, the bus is quite often full when it gets to that point on its route and we've also had a reduction in funding for transit. From the area, so I wonder how that all connects. Um I have concerns around the crosswalk and 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 the safety around that. Um and what that's gonna look like, so I'll definitely need a lot more information on that before I'm gonna go into the second reading. Um. And I just feel like I just want to hear from the board how we feel about this development in general, like it feels like it's a little bit of sprawl to me. I I would think we all are very anxious to to. Uh find ways to approve more affordable housing wherever we can, employee housing wherever we can, I just wonder if it's. The right project in the wrong place, um and so, yeah, and this is a question, this is not. Phrased as a question to be a statement, it's a question for the board, I'm kind of trying to understand where we feel as a board this aligns with our I G S and our. And what we're trying to accomplish with with uh building housing.
I have Director Morton, then Director Mac, then Director Pat Gill.
Uh this is tough because obviously we don't want to stop housing, we need housing where we can. Get it, um but the pressures that that these, that Wedgewood's and this would put on. Certain amenities in Whistler such as the, as Meadow Park, um added pressures with um no contribution to. I'm just using Meadow Park as an example, is really tough, we're bursting at the seams as it is, um and then to this out there. It's just, it's just added pressure that I don't think that we can take at this time, so I'm skeptical about it, um. I don't see how it can work with having two separate stratas manage this, I worry about the pressure that it would put on W H A. Um, yeah, I'm 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 concerned about it.
Thank you, uh Director Mac.
Yeah, um like. I just find it interesting that um. There's a proposal that's in Area C, so it's not in Pemberton, it's not in Whistler. But Whistler and Pemberton are trying to control what's gonna happen with this development. And when you start talking about climate and cars on the road and all that. How many cars are you putting on the road in Pemberton with all your development? And the same thing with you and Whistler, with all the people coming to your community every day. It's a roadblock from Whistler to Squamish, um and then we're gonna have maybe twenty more cars here? And and this is your big, you know, can do it thing, same thing with Meadow Park. How many people from Pemberton in this area here use Meadow Park? Um so maybe what you should be doing is working out an agreement with Pemberton and Area C. For um helping with the funding of Meadow Park, if it's a community asset, so to speak. Then we we've never talked about that.
I agree, that's true.
So then we should, right, but um I think this is an excellent proposal and and the thing that I like. It's an excellent proposal, but the there's there's issues to be worked out, of course. But that will all happen with meetings with transit or with M O T I and all this stuff. The thing that I think that we're not taking into consideration is the value of. That land that's gonna be donated, um and it it's not for future development. It's for recreation and um the regional district does not own. Very much land um for Parkswise or whatever, um and we have so many people. From Whistler and Pemberton using that site right now with the trails that are on it. So if we get control of that, we can augment it and it'll be part of the Sea to Sky Trail, all that sort of stuff. So I think it's it's a huge uh win for us and I think we really need to take advantage of it. So anyways, I'm in full support of what's being proposed here, so that's my comment.
Thank you. Uh Director Pattingill, then Director Rainbow.
Yeah, I mean, my read of the regional growth strategy, well, conversations we've had here is that we are trying to focus development to. Already developed areas where uh there is services, employment, uh where you don't have to get into a car to get to a job, to get to your services. And this, to my mind, is at odds with what's in our, what I see in our R G S, it's it's development that effectively forces people in the cars. We heard that, you know, there's some hope transit might work and it's already so challenging, and so now we have a bunch of money spent on something that just doesn't work for transit and. What's seen is like, B C Transit doesn't know what's possible, there's a busy highway, the dangerous corner that people would have to cross. Um and it just. It 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 forces people practically, and you know, when I talk to people and what they need and why they say they they have to have a car, it's because their. Their employment isn't near their home, their services aren't near their home, and that's exactly what this is, and and so for me, it's not um. As much of a question about the number of amenities, it's it's forcing people to be in a car if you want to live here, which is what I think as a board we have said we don't want to do. Um that's why we are focusing our development to already settled areas, um. And I would not put this in that camp because it doesn't have those basic services, those employment, that those pieces aren't in this plan, so. For me, this is hard to support.
Uh I have, I'll need then I'll go back to Russell.
I I support what Russell had to say, I have a couple of comments, one, I have no concerns whatsoever about crossing the road then. Cause I'm not an expert and I'm confident that Ministry of Transport will come up with a. Direction that we have to take, it 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 could be a traffic light. It could be that we need an underpass, it, I I don't know what they might might say. But we're we're not traffic experts and for us to sit here and say, oh, I'm worried about crossing that road, well, I'd be worried about crossing it the way it is right now. The speed at which people drive up there has no. Neighbors, but. You know, what, if you if you take a look at Britannia Beach, it awfully difficult to cross the road there, except there's a traffic light and there's and and a pedestrian control. Control crossing, so if that has to be there. Oh my goodness, it slows people down going from Pemberton to Whistler or from Whistler to Pemberton, but so what?
Oh my goodness, it slows people down going from Pemberton to Whistler or from Whistler to Pemberton, but so what? So that that's one thing, the second second thing is that we we have this um, this thing that comes up on the our agendas from time to time called P E V S. And what is that? It's a, it's an excellent cooperation between. A municipality and the regional district, Area C. There's some really good things happening between Pemberton and and Area C, that's a model for the rest of the region. And I look at Whistler and I hear Whistler saying, oh, no, the amenities is this, that and the other, what does Whistler do? How many times has Whistler come to the regional district and said? We've got people from the regional district using our amenities, what can we do about that? And there's mechanisms to deal with that. But that hasn't happened, so for for to be sitting now and say, well, we don't like this new development. Because it's gonna put pressure on our amenities, that's the wrong approach, you should be thinking about what what can we do cooperatively? To to help ease that pressure. And then if you look at the forest area, there there, you can say, well, there's only twenty percent available for development, but what else could you do with that area? You know, what, one, one, the obvious one is recreation, and and you could extend it beyond. Um, what it's being or how it's being used right now. You you can actually, we we could look look at development at some time in the future of, um. Accommodation for youth from the lower mainland to come up and to be able to have access and stay in an area. And have access to sort of really good. Mounted biking trails and things like that, there there's that sort of thing, there's, um. What about logging in that area? Not conventional logging, but what about involving somebody that would wanna do logging using horses? To going back to an old style of logging, and you know, we could say, oh, you could wanna do something like that, well. Th- those kinds of things are being done and explored in other parts of the country, um. What about research, climate research, what is the effect of climate change on these forests? We can say, oh, well, there's lots of fires happening and that's a, uh, as a result of climate change, but. What long-term studies are being are being done right now on the changes in the forest? There's things we could get involved with, we've got a university involved in that, there's so many things we could do if we used our imagination a little bit. And for us, we we, what I hear is that Sydney is saying, oh, the answer is no, how many, how how can I justify my answer of no? And I and I, I'm sorry, I think it's the wrong approach, and to go back to R G S. I think there's language in there which suggests that if you add a minimal amount of, um, uh. Housing to an existing development. That's acceptable, and we have a development at at Wedgewood's, and we're adding a little bit to that. And and this comments, and my final comment is is about putting cars on the road. And and I look at the 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 development in Britannia, look at the development in Squamish. And look at the cars that are heading south out of those developments, for people traveling to to work down the lower mainland. Far more than a dozen cars. This is a relatively small development, but it would be vitally important to the people that are able to move into it, a youth. For us to be sitting here saying, no, we don't want it because we don't like this, that and the other, I I'm sorry, I I think I think we should accept this, we work through. We have the que- questions we had last time, they've been really well answered by staff. And we may have some other questions, and I think that that we we should be. Taking the approach, how can we say yes to this? This this is something we really should do, how do we get to yes?
I want to apologize for laughing while you were speaking, I was not laughing at what you said. I was laughing at a facial reaction that, um, when you said logging, so I wasn't laughing at what you were saying. I just wanna apologize.
You don't need to.
Okay, well, no, I just, I'm that seriously, and I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a speakers list, I'm gonna go, um. I'm gonna go for first time speakers first, so I'm gonna go Director Stoner, then Director Birch Jones, and then I'll come back to you, oh, and Director Jamarra, and then I'll come back to you, Director Mac.
Thank you, uh, through the chair, um. I think undoubtedly there are tensions with every proposal, and we look at the R G S and it is very broad, uh, and it. I think this proposal meets some of the things that are in in the R G S and it falls really short on others. Um, I think in the spirit of. Trying to get to yes, I don't, I I think that there are some really big leaps. And so one of the challenges that I have is like, yes, we can engineer our way out of a safe crossing across the highway. But a signalized crossing is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, plus putting a pipe under the road for the fire component, and and and. And should we be doing that for twelve units? Um, it is not very much housing, and our, absolutely, our housing need is high and our affordable housing need is high, and then at some point. Um, you need to make a balanced judgment on how much effort are we actually putting into realizing? Twelve additional housing units. Just to make it work on the other side of the highway when there's already a large scale of development with lots of roads that go in on the other side, and so. That's the tension that I feel with this as proposed, um. I do think that for me, having effective transit through this development. In some way, shape or form is mandatory, and some sort of safe crossing across the highway, I believe that working with Ministry of Transportation. We could probably get there, um, we've been asking for just updated timing on our height, on our. On the lights on the southern portion of the highway through Squamish with M O T T for the last. Twelve years, and we haven't gone an updated timing cycle of our lights, so I don't think we'll get an additional traffic light here. Um, that is probably one of the hardest things to do. Um, and so we do have to keep in mind some of the safety components, in terms of the land donation. I hear the 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 request to try and be creative here on what we could do with the land. Um, the vast majority of it, it's is, or at least a majority of it, maybe not the vast majority, but at least a majority of it is over twenty percent steep slope. We're not getting a horse in there, um, and if it is remaining as private land, it's not developable, um, as I. Heard one of my colleagues say, there isn't actually a huge amount of value to it to us or to the developer in terms of actual dollar value. So it is a recreational asset, definitely, um, if the developer really wanted to, or the landowner, they could put up a bunch of. Fencing and say, you can't come in here and build more mountain bike trails, but that's not really a good neighbor practice or something that I would expect most. Uh, landowners in this region to do, and so I don't. Know why them then handing the land off to us as a regional district is actually. A benefit to the region, it hasn't been identified in any of our plans as a priority asset, um. And so I don't, and then it creates a an additional. Piece of work for us to manage and tax for and figure out how we're going to do that, um, and so that's one that I just, I don't actually see. The value as presented in the dollar value in the table, actually lining up with what I think the the real value is to our communities. Um, and then, uh, finally, there was another piece that you thought, that will be further back to feedback on, which is the below market component of the housing. Um, and this still feels like it falls short to me, I know that we talk about thirty percent below. Um, below. Thirty percent market. Well, as we talk about below market, we talk about thirty percent of folks' income, they're not going to, uh. Not more than thirty percent of folks' income are going to housing. And, um, even at the sale price that we're looking at here, I think that puts most folks above that thirty percent threshold. Um, and while it is still below market, it isn't thirty percent below what I would expect construction costs to be. Not that I know the construction cost per se, but I think, um, if I even just do some calculations of. Reducing by twenty percent, uh, which is the typical for-profit overhead, then you're getting into closer to eight hundred thousand dollars for those units. Um, and so there are some tensions here that I just don't think that as presented, for me, this this hits the mark, I'm I'm happy to continue to. Talk about how we get to yes, but for me, that is transit and that is actually affordable housing on site. Um, and or make better use of the money that we're gonna keep throwing at trying to develop the east or the west side of the highway. And make the west side work better, um, because then you don't have people that are going across the highway, you're not putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into a signalized crosswalk. And you can put that money into other things on the other side, so that's the tension that I feel with this, uh, at this time.
Thank you, Director Birch Jones.
Thank you, and and I know your expression was partly because when Director Rainbow said logging, you saw my eyebrows. Because I'm thinking about the value of that habitat, um. For wildlife, of course, and and that's huge, and owls, for example, don't care about steep slopes, so. Um, I think acquiring land in such a, uh, you know. Place under such heavy pressure is is really valuable for the S L R D. In our conversation about how to manage that land, it's a future one, but I I just think. The opportunity to have it there. At least considered for not developing, and I I wouldn't support logging, but, um, has a lot of value for wildlife. And, uh, I recall, I quite liked the last proposal from this proponent that had. A significant number of units, um, and and we turned that one down. So now we are back with a fewer number of units, but still. Those are some units which to me have a very high, high value, um. The traffic situation from my experience driving down over the years has, well. I just, I I rarely drive down, it's way beyond, just because of what's happened with the traffic and and Whistler and. North and South of Whistler, so this adds. A little tiny pressure, but really that problem is so big, I, that that's insignificant to me. Um, yeah, so so I support it, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Director Mac.
Yep, could ask staff some questions? The Sea to Sky Trail works in improvements, what is anticipated? Cause isn't the Sea to Sky Trail on the. East side of the highway?
Thank you through the chair, so initially, we had worked with our parks, previous parks and trails coordinator and identified a few specific segments of the Sea to Sky Trail that are incomplete. And had it written so that the funds would be allocated to those specific locations. We had further conversations with Environmental Services and determined it's better to leave it a little bit more broad, so it could be any segment of the Sea to Sky Trail. That needs works and improvements over time, whether it's, you know, fixing a bridge or fixing a segment of the trail that gets washed out. The funds would be available for that purpose. So not necessarily right at. You know, where this development is located, but it could be anywhere along the Sea to Sky Trail as it provides regional connectivity.
Okay, when will be the final decision on the amenities?
Um, so thank you through the chair, that's largely at board direction, so at the time of adoption, we would. Have the final amenity package presented in a way that the board is supportive of.
So then you think that we could get a final cost? On whatever it takes to do that. Uh, the transit part of it. Crossing the infrastructure.
Um, so thank you through the chair, there there. Is costing laid out in this report, it's obviously order of magnitude, it's very high level, not fine grain detail. Um, but the estimated cost for the bus layby and turnaround is a hundred and ten thousand dollars, plus the shelter at a cost of twenty five, so that takes you to one thirty five. The signalized crossing is estimated to cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was mentioned, uh, there was a plan to put something in originally? Was there any funding? Associated to that? In the original proposal?
Thanks through the chair, so there is a, there's a bus layby, but it's essentially just a pullout on Riverside Drive, and as Director Nita mentioned, that's not. Workable because there's nowhere for the bus to turn around, and that's never going to go.
Was there a shelter built?
No, there was not, and I'm I'm not sure if you need to notice that we have funds set aside for that.
Recall.
Twenty, twenty years ago.
So there are some funds available?
They would have been associated with that specific, um. Uh, location.
Well, I'm talking about the shelter.
Yeah, they were, they were part of the original development.
So, uh, I'm just curious. Cause the beneficiaries are gonna be. Uh, you know, if this little project pays for it all, the beneficiaries are, the major portion of it's gonna be to the. Existing communities that's there. So where does that, where does that fit in? Into this whole transit proposal?
Well, thank you through the chair, I I'll have a look after this meeting, I'll speak to our finance department and see what happened when at. In two thousand six and where that money is now, if we still have it or if it's been allocated. I can take a look at that, whether there's still money for a shelter on on the east side.
So the the other one question I've got is on the, uh. On the non-ma- non-market covenant and housing. Uh, you know, they've got a proposal per unit of three hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and sixty dollar production. If we use, take some, a little bit of that. Per unit. And put it into all this infrastructure for the, uh. For the bus, bus, the bus, the whole bus situation, the crossing, the infrastructure. And so on and so forth, including a hundred thousand. From the uh Sea to Sky Trail work. Just start thinking about how can we make this happen? Cause I fully support. Uh, Director Mac on this.
Um, so thank you through the chair, just briefly to add to that, um, what you would probably see is a reduction in the number of proposed non-market units, their reason being. That there are mortgage regulations that stipulates the cost being under a million dollars, I believe for first time home buyers, it's part of the. The thinking behind keeping it. Under a million dollars in terms of what the price is as they're brought to the market. But we can certainly expect that was a point.
I will go back to Director Mac.
Yeah, I guess one thing I just wanna say is, uh, where I was talking about the R G S and. You know, how this works out, but. So many people. In Pemberton and Little Lot, Area C, Birken. Squamish, all that area down there. I don't know what the number is, but I would think it's rather large, I know here. Working at, working Whistler, so they drive back and forth every day. And some people that I know who have their own businesses, plumbers and whatnot, they're driving back and forth constantly, so. This, to me, this thing about putting another twenty cars on the road is just. It's a red herring is what it is, I mean, we've got so many cars on the road, and people are going there to go to work. Um, that's not gonna change, in fact, it's probably gonna get more as time goes on, as. You know, Whistler expands and more people come to Whistler, they need more employees, so.
So I put myself on the speakers list because I haven't had an opportunity to weigh in. Um, I've always been challenged by the idea of cracking the other side of the highway. Um, I see that the existing development, uh, you know, is is not. Fully built out in all its seven phases, um, I I've pressed over the years, um, why not use some of the undeveloped? Lots for this, I understand, uh, I've been told by staff a number of times that they, uh, don't support having. Uh, or cannot change the strata composition on the existing side of the highway, and so that is. Why this hasn't gone to the existing side of the highway? I don't see a problem if they, if we were to add twelve. Homes to the existing side of the highway, the the intersection is already established, this doesn't change the road composition, it doesn't change the speed of the highway. If we were to do it on the existing side, and then you're not cutting into, um, ecosystems and. Established forested area, um. You know, for the sake of twelve homes, um. Some of the challenges that I have with this current development is is to say that, um. You know, a crosswalk is challenging, uh, it is a fast section of highway and. And as we see through Whistler, wherever we don't have established crosswalks, we have interest. Interactions between pedestrians and vehicles. And that is a challenge that we've taken to Ministry of Transportation a number of times, and and effectively. You know, to get a light at Emerald, uh, would mean, um. It it it's unfortunate, but something tragic has to happen before they're going to add another intersection with a light. And you don't want that tragic hat- thing to happen. If you see a light in Emerald, you know that someone has. Had a really bad day, and so I'm really challenged by that, and I know that, but we don't want to, um. We don't, we don't want to say, oh, I wish we had thought of that when we first approved this development. I think that horse is out of the barn. I think this is twelve units on a very, very, uh, proximal area of. An established development, to say that this is a brand new development is not correct, um, there are a hundred and eight lots in Wedgewood's. And everyone that I know that lives there loves living there. Loves living there, and most of them work from home or work remotely, so the proximity to employment. Is a, is a less compelling argument at this point, because the majority of those people. Are um you know, there's a school bus that picks up all of the kids in Wedgewood and takes them to the schools in Whistler, so. Um my plea to the parents in Wedgewood is please make sure your kids take the bus and don't. Everyone get in your car to drive your kids to school, that always happens unfortunately, um. We get an early bus, um and I'm I'm going on a rant here because. I have been super challenged by this a number of times um. As the Chair of the Whistler Housing Authority, uh it's very difficult to say no to housing um. It is um. When we make the argument for regional transit and the need for transit and we've supported additional buses. Uh from Pemberton to Whistler to support. Employment and access to medical care and and all of the reasons that Pemberton needs to come into Whistler. When you add more density into an established neighborhood, whether. Whether we feel this is more density or not, um it does help support the case for regional transit, so. We can put more buses on the road when more people are living in the area, this is where I turn. Kind of where I'm going. Um adding twenty cars to the road or twelve cars to the road. Is not a big deal uh in scheme of things. Um. Yes, we're adding more families that will be using the services in Whistler. And we are at a breaking point in some of our services, and we all know that. Um I like what Director Mac said is that we've never asked for a piece of the. Community amenity, and so should we be? Yes, I think we should be, like, we absolutely want to support the community. Pemberton likely will never be able to afford to have a pool like Whistler has, and so do we have. A lot of families from Pemberton bringing their kids for swimming lessons in Whistler, absolutely, they can't get into our lessons because. Our capacity for lessons is so small and they have to wait a week to get into lessons, and so. Anyone who's tried to book swimming lessons knows that you're never getting into lessons in Whistler, but when we can help. The families of Pemberton access recreation, we should, um and this is true for Wedgewood as well. Uh before second reading or before third reading, early on in the process, I would like to see um. You know, a real discussion about how uh Whistler captures some of that amenity amenity contribution. Um that will help offset, because we know that the Nesters Waste Transfer Station. Is accepting the waste from Pemberton and from Wedgewood, that's just a fact, I know that they've got a a garbage room. Uh building in Wedgewood, and so that is great, that's that's super helpful, and I'm glad that that was contemplated in the regional development. Um but we all know that the Whistler uh Waste Transfer Station is also taking a a lot of the waste from. Here, and that is okay. Um but we all have to be really honest about what this is. Um. Again, my mind is not made up on this, um I do see the benefit of adding more housing. I don't see that four units um or the cash in lieu is the trade for me. For me, the cash in lieu is a better uh as. As Whistler Housing Authority has contemplated sixteen hundred new units of affordable housing the last four years. Um a million and a half dollars goes a long way when you leverage that into an existing development of rental housing. I would far rather see that million and a half contributed to a rental building. Somewhere in an established community like Whistler or in Pemberton, we're seeing lots of housing coming up in Pemberton. So I would rather see that that cash contribution come to the SLRD and we decide how to spend that, rather than four units of ownership. Um I just think it's a better value for us, and I would make the argument that that is where we should go with this community amenity. Um and you know, if it's twelve units of market. And then the market can bear those twelve units, we will get better. Um value out of that million and a half to the regional district, so that I that's where I really wanna go um in. And I would like to see that before third reading for sure, I would love to see it before second reading. Again, my mind is not made up on this, and I'm appreciative of everyone making their contributions to this conversation. Um it's not about us and them, it's not about Pemberton trying to stop this development, it's not about Whistler trying to stop this development. It's about every member of this board trying to get the best deal for the regional district. And so I would like to keep that at the center of this conversation, that this is about the regional district. And that is the end of my comments for now, I'm gonna go back to uh Mike, then Chris, then Tony. Oh, sorry, I'll go to Armin first because he hasn't said anything, uh Director Hertford, go ahead.
Thank you for that um. And thank you for the conversation so far, um I think all the perspectives are uh. Important as we we as we weigh this, um we're on. On this uh similar, I'll maybe I'll just sort of pick up where where um. Uh Chair Ford left off around the amenity, I I think that um. I'm having a hard time with the of the below-market aspect here, and I agree with that assessment we just heard from from Chair Ford. Uh in particular, giving. Expertise in this uh in this area, in this region, so um I'm su- more supportive of that direction. I think that one of the things that's appealing to me here uh is that. It puts some of these conversations to rest. We heard about more units being proposed at different times, different locations, I think having both sides of the intersection. Uh actually activated and finished draws more attention to it, it might make it safer, I will remind that that is. Is a provincial responsibility, we haven't heard. There was approval from Ministry of Transportation uh or preliminary approval granted. Um and um the safety of the highway is is um is for them, obviously, we need to have. Uh an eye to not um exacerbating i- issues, but at the same time. Um that's their uh area of of responsibility and expertise, um so. I'm comfortable with uh with that, but I think this also with the land transfer, with the building out of the. Of this site in this, at this level of density, also finishes this process in my mind. We heard there'd be no additional units on the on the west, yes, this is in- incre- you know um. Activates the, or sorry, no, no more units on the east, this activates the west a a little bit. And then it's done, and this conversation doesn't come back to us with a higher level of. Of density or uh any other number of of things, so I think this this to me is is uh is getting. Is getting close, um now the broader issue uh of um. You know, delivery of recreation services across the um regional district is something that. Uh I think is valuable and maybe is, and and has come up in other conversations, and maybe it's best to look at it. Um from a higher level of of uh rather than holding each. Um piece to account, and I do think this is something we absolutely need to reckon with, because. It's challenging, it's challenging for for all of us, and this is something that does come up. Actually forms a large part of what regional district work is in in other areas, whether in some areas, regional districts is. Delivering the recreation services, the municipalities are contributing, and here we've got it uh the other way around, which is also fine, but we need to figure out. Uh this issue um going forward, or we're gonna trip on it every time something. Um comes up, and I know we've we've had this discussion in other um uh developments and uh. It's, it is an important uh and impactful um piece of this. Um but given the scope here and what I've heard around a a commitment to to investigate and consider what. What that could look like, um I'm I'm supportive, but um. Uh I still think there's work to do broadly in the in the region around the um that rec services piece, so. Um I think we're we're going in the right, in the right direction, given the options and um that I've seen so far, so I'm. Cautiously supportive at this point.
Yeah, um I know. Mike is next, and then Chris.
We are kind of ready to propose a motion if if people are almost ready, but I mean, there's sort of a process for question for the board here, I mean. Before us today is the amenity package, I have thoughts and an emotion that I can potentially propose on the amenity package. Which would undoubtedly get amended, and that's fine, but um. Are we sending staff away to do work on this amenity package when there's still a lot of uncertainty about. Whether there's going to be a willingness to give a second reading and a third reading to it, so are we doing things in the right order? I guess they have to happen, I mean, the amenity package has to be accepted for us to give a second and a third reading, but I'm just. I have thoughts around the many package, I'm still not convinced around some of the issues. Um I'm not, I'm on the fence, I'm not, I'm not uh, I'm on fence. And I'm not sure. Uh which way I'm gonna go, and I wanna understand more about the crosswalk, and I wanna understand more about. Um transit, uh how Area C is gonna support transit if we're gonna keep building areas out like that um. So that that's gonna sort of weigh in and and how I feel about second and third reading, in the meantime about the amenity package, I feel like what I've heard around the table. If we're gonna come to a motion on the many package, I think I would like to see staff go back and and renegotiate the amenity package. Um in that. I don't believe the transit hub should come out, as the Director de Mer pulled out, there was already funds put aside for uh uh. Um some transit pullout that's useless. So they, that that's not working, and now both communities are gonna use one over here, I don't believe that's amenity, I believe that's infrastructure. I believe that transit hub should not be part of the amenity package, period, um for all those reasons. Uh I believe the value of the land donated, I believe there is value for protecting wildlife, I believe it will be protected. And there's ways to protect it without giving it a a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar price tag to to the regional district. And I think we can look at ways to do that, so I'm happy to keep it in there, but I believe that's an inflated value for it. So I think I would like to see staff go back and renegotiate the amenity package, um and I'm. I'm still interested in hearing more about the conversation around four units or or um cash in lieu. Hearing more about that conversation, I'm sort of on the fence of that as well, but I I'd like to see us s- send this amenity package back.
Yeah, thank you through the chair, um so I just wanted to clarify, um. Like, as some of you have who've been on this board table for a while, this is the third iteration of this proposal, and. So the reason that staff has brought this back to the committee of the whole is that we sensed that there was some. Concern about the the amenity package the last time we brought it forward, and so. Um in this report, we've really clarified the amenity package. We're not presenting it as an amenity package that we're asking the the board to accept at this time. What we're really looking for is some pretty clear direction uh as to whether. The board wishes to pursue the actual construction of the four units. Or if there's some sort of cash in lieu concept that they would prefer us to move in, because. Uh if we're going to bring this back for second reading, we really need some clarity on what that might look like, and. So I think it's important to just note that none of these things are like. Fully on the table as part of the package, they can all be negotiated. The value of the land is based on an assessed value, and so if the developer were to. Provide it to the SLRD, they would get a tax receipt for that sort of donation, and that's what that would be based on. So the number shown is really more about what is the actual value, um the assessed value. I've heard comments that maybe that's not the value to us, maybe it's not as valuable, but that's really just to sort of show you what that would be. Um I think just just bear in mind that, you know, these these things all cost money, and so um. In the menu of items, we sort of can't have it all, it has to still make. Financial sense for the developer, if they're to build the remaining units, they have to be able to make a reasonable profit um. So anyway, I think that, all that to say, um it would be helpful for us to. To get a little bit more direction on whether board really wants to see the four units. Or if they'd rather see cash in lieu, if they wanna see transit or not, we don't have to pursue transit um. We can leave it as it is and perhaps just take uh do the development and take a cash in lieu contribution. We don't have to take the land donation, these are all things that we can sort of uh consider. Yeah, so, did you wanna add something?
Just really quickly, uh just to add on on the the comments that were just made around transit, I do want to highlight that in the board policy for community amenity contributions. Transit is included under the list of potential amenity contributions, so it is considered. As a community amenity under that board policy. Which is is why you see it included in the proposed valuation for the community amenity, you shouldn't why it's. Being seen as that part of the proposal.
Yeah, uh yeah, it's kind of like saying, you know, it's gonna need sewer, and therefore the sewer is the the amenity, it's not, it's the cost of building. You know, adding transit, layby or shelter or a roundabout. Is the cost of making it an efficient use of the space, you're not putting money into the transit system that will then. Put new buses on the road, and so that would be the amenity, in my opinion, it wouldn't be about, you know, well, we put a light there, so there. Therefore, now we've contributed to the community, well, no, you you made your, you made your. That was livable, so let's be clear about that, um I do have a. Question of clarity from staff um. Um. Is the order of go correct, so we've given it first reading, we've done referrals, we can go back for more referrals. If the amenity package changes, am I correct on that? Um before it comes back for second reading, or we could consider second reading. And still do more referrals, we could change the amenity package, like, there is no set. Prescribed, this has to be accomplished before third reading. If there was a public hearing, it would have to take place before, but that is not a thing anymore, and so that's fine. Um but I think Director Richmond asked, does the, is there anything that requires us to consider? These items before we go to second reading? No?
I think, uh Chair, I think the um concern for us is that if we are gonna bring a bylaw for second reading, we really wanna make sure. That we're really nailing it in terms of what the board is looking for, which is why we're here today, is we really wanna know, what does the board wanna see here? We don't wanna bring a bylaw back and have it fail. Um and so we wanna, i- i- if the board wants to see success for this for this development, we need to bring a bylaw that's gonna set us up for success.
Okay, and then my other question of clarity is, and I hope this is useful to the discussion. Is that if we change this from four units of the twelve. That are covenanted as employee restricted in whatever re- iteration of that housing agreement looks like. If we change this zoning to allow for twelve. Non-covenanted units, that's an obvious lift to the developer in his profit, their profit. Um do we know what the value of those, so I mean, we can probably do the math on what the eight units. Were going to be, now if it's twelve units, so how does that change that ca- that cash contribution to us? It doesn't stay at one point five?
With the developers in the room, and and if the board chair wishes for him to speak to that, he may be able to provide that answer. Um at this time.
I would look for a motion from the board to allow the developer to speak, rather than me deciding that by myself. Seconded, does anyone have any comments to allowing the developer to participate in this discussion? Any anyone concerned? I see no concern, so I will allow it, uh the motion passes. I I basically called for anyone opposed, okay, so um Mr. Hert, if you would like to weigh in on. That question, and we may ask you other questions too.
Yes, if there's a change from the eight market to the and four to a combination of all twelve being market. Obviously, that changes our economics, uh and. What would be only reasonable would be to sit down with staff. And relook at the amenity package, what I'll call the amenity, I know you're differentiating between. Contributions and amenities so uh or infrastructure, but as far as the amenity component of it, that would. That would then need to be rediscussed with staff, and we would need to come up with a new set of numbers to justify that. Um and then the choice as to how that amenity would be utilized. I guess would come back to the board, but we'd come up with a number uh to be used at your discretion.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. Director de Mayor? Sorry, I do have a speakers list. I think just following on that and.
No, it's not, not.
It's not on that.
Same same that staff.
Sorry.
My question will go to staff.
Okay, so then um. Let's go back to the speakers list.
Chris is on there.
I have Chris next, then I have Tony, then I have Jenna, then I have South.
Yes, that just a couple of things. Um. I heard a comment that, you know, if we were to move forward with this, it would sort of be the end of it. Um i- in future discussions, in my mind, the RGS sort of already puts us there. I suppose theoretically, there's something like. From my perspective, incredible, maybe there'd be a reason to reconsider that. Um. Just my perspective, I I think to staff's comments, it's hard for me to say preference for. Uh it's non-market versus cash. Like, for me, uh I struggle. In the context of the RGS with more development here, especially on the west side of the highway. And you know, one or the other is neither here nor there, so I I have trouble giving direction of reference there, because I'm not sure either one would. Put this over the hump for me. Um I think I I also wanted to comment. And I think our Squamish O C P is very much aligned with the RGS, and when developed, when I'm looking at developments in Squamish. I'm not sort of approving, hey, uh every unit has two or three parking spots. I wanna know. How are we getting the minimum amount of parking spots? How are we making sure that these folks aren't commuting to Whistler and don't need to? Uh for services, for employment or anything, and and so the discussion and the analysis I do of a Squamish development is. Actually no different. I would say the exact same things about Squamish development that I'm saying here, and and if this sort of thing was proposed in Squamish. I'd be saying the same thing about it. So I'm not giving a special treatment. This is a. You know, again, I'm thinking of the RGS, the O C P, these are all lining in my mind, and and that's how I'm doing this.
Thank you. Uh Director, go ahead.
Yeah, I think. I'd like the staff to go away. Not having a clear understanding of where the connection might be, you know, because we we have. Some arguments against having any kind of development here at all. And we've got other people focusing on what the amenities would would be if we do have a development. But I think we we need, I I don't know if we can get to some sort of a a point where we agree that there is gonna be some development. And and now we're just talking about the amenities. So that that that's something to keep in mind. Um and I find it interesting that. We turned down a unit, a a proposal here for, I think it was about sixty ounces or something like that, because it was too many for this area. There was not enough. So I um it what's what lays behind that? You know, if if we got. A really strong belief that we don't want anything here, because if that if that's where we're at, we need to save. And get it built, but. Um I know that last time, not the last time, first time this came, when it was, I think, around sixty. And we turned it down, didn't even get to first reading. Uh I got dozens of emails from people in Whistler. Sort of arguing against what we what we had done, you know, and, you know, one of the comments was. From the board, well, we don't want development on that side of the highway, and the comments I got was, where's most of Whistler? On that side of the highway. So it's not, so it's a a novelty, a a new idea to to develop on the west side of the highway. You you've got that all the way through Whistler. So that, you you know, we we need to sort that out, and I think with the the RGS argument, I think language in our RGS. That this is within. It it fits within, you know, what we're saying. I don't think plan planning staff would be bringing it to us unless they were confident that it was. Compliant with our RGS. So I that to me is is a, you know, a a foresight. And just one final comment about the logging, the kind of logging I was talking about would actually improve environment for wildlife. And it would improve the 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 diversity of wildlife in that area. And I'm I'm looking back at a a style of logging that goes back to sort of the early days, maybe, and I'm looking at what. I didn't mention indigenous people. We haven't talked to Lilwa. There's maybe something we could do with them in in this area as well. It's an imagination about what we could do. It's a tremendous resource, and four hundred and something thousand dollars, I think that's cheap, half the price. Anyway, thank you very much.
Uh Director Stoner.
Thank you. Uh through the chair, I'm really. Do my very best to try and keep us. On task around the community amenity contributions and the two components that we're seeking clarity for. Before I jump to that, I do want to clarify that the previous proposal, we did not turn that down. The proponent just didn't pursue it. So it came to the board. There was no decision on turning it down. The proponent just didn't pursue it after.
The first.
This is before you run the board, this is.
But the when this was a sixty units across on the other side of the highway, we didn't turn that down.
It was a permission to proceed, and they did not get permission to proceed. So it didn't go to first.
Didn't go to first reading.
Staff report says that the applicant proceeded to the point of consideration of first reading, but did not proceed and further was abandoned.
We were both on that one at the time.
Yeah, uh the the previous proposal was um abandoned. By the applicant because of internal issues around uh the strata. Yeah.
The first proposal.
The first one um didn't proceed because of board decision, yeah.
That was twenty twenty. We were all on Zoom.
Yeah.
It was on that side of the highway. The one that was abandoned was on the existing side of the highway.
That was when there was a small apartment building being considered on the west side.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, to clarify, when there were twenty-five townhouses and thirty-five apartment units. In the previous application from twenty nineteen, that's the one that was abandoned.
No, that was the one that was denied by the board.
Thanks, Director. I think that the language in that report is probably a little bit confusing. It was abandoned in the sense that they didn't come back with a different proposal. Because the board didn't support it in that consideration.
Thank you for that clarity. And on the two components of the community many contribution, but we're seeking clarity on this today. Um for me, the transit is uh is definitely a requirement. I think it's a real. Um. Uh it's really unfortunate that the existing transit infrastructure is non-functional. And so um even from the perspective of then giving some grace that this could fit into a community many contribution to make transit work for the development as a whole. Given that there's already a hundred or so units there, I'm willing to consider that. Um but it needs to be functional, um and it needs to account for safe crossing of the highway, and I agree that is not gonna be. Um determined by us. Uh M O T T can do that, um but to me, there's still. At the end of the day, there's gonna be consideration as to whether it's worth putting however many hundreds of thousands of dollars and make that safe crossing work. Um. The piece on the non-market housing, I am. Uh after listening to my colleagues, a little bit more interested in the cash contribution component. As opposed to building out the units here on site, um if we can sell all twelve of them at market and we can get. More than one and a half million dollars in cash. Um and funnel that to an organization uh that can then leverage that with further. Uh funding from either the province or the feds. Uh to deliver on below-market rental predominantly. To me, that is a higher priority than than market or than below-market. Purchase. Um we know that that delivers greater affordability over a longer period of time for for those who really need it. And so um while there's a need across the housing spectrum for non-market housing in both categories. Um I think that the priority, uh my personal values, uh what I've heard from community has always been to focus on market before ownership. Rental, yeah, sorry, market, yeah, below-market rental, we do work below.
Thank you. Uh Director de Mayor.
The. There's a lot of work to be done, as we talked about on this. Uh on the amenity contributions. Could this be brought back for another. Cow meeting for information?
That's the will of the board. We can make a resolution, ask staff to come back with some of the points that they've heard today, bring it back to another cow. We would rather get it right than to rush through something. Okay. Um so I don't have anyone else on my speakers list. I'm happy to consider a motion. To that effect that we ask staff to go uh back to negotiating with the points that I've noted here. Um with transit is infrastructure, um it is important to this development. We want to make sure that it is. And um but it is not, I have not heard overwhelming support that that is part of. A community amenity, but that is a requirement of this development, and therefore not something that we would put uh within our community. Uh receipt, um that the cash in lieu um. For non-market housing uh would be more uh attractive than the four units. Therefore, what is the new cash in lieu amount? Um if it's twelve units of market. Um. One of the other things that I've heard is that the um the cost of adding a hydrant, as was just described in the report. Um or the pipe under the highway um to allow for fire suppression on the new side of the highway. Um we want to understand what that costs and and what that uh crossing looks like. Um certainly, we want to understand the pedestrian crossing at this intersection. Um. There were a number of other things, and I saw you furiously making notes, so I'm sure there are other items that were captured there. This has also been live recorded. Therefore, we've got lots of notes on uh the comments from board members. So I think the motion is to ask staff to uh go back to negotiating and come back to a future cow. Uh with a new negotiation uh for the consideration of the community community amenity.
Okay, good.
Moved by Director Mayor, seconded by Director Warden to that motion.
Yeah.
All right, let's do this. I'll call the question. All favored. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Take a five-minute recess, please. Uh so we have completed number five. We are now um yeah, gonna go back in time to number. Three on the committee of all agenda. We just made the motion that we go into post. Moved by Director Rainbow, seconded by Director Warden. All in favor and opposed, motion carries.